Walking through the city, lights all aglow. Everybody's got a story to show. Wheels keep spinning, streets overflow. Hustle never stops, we're in the flow. Skyline's high like our dreams in the air. Concrete jungle, we got flair. Rhythm of the night, we don't care. Underneath the stars, we breathe rare. In this urban jungle, we're alive. Heartbeats echo as we strive. Dreams collide where the streets survive. Together we'll thrive, side by side. Echoes of the past linger near. Future calls, we face it with no fear. Every corner tells a tale so clear. In the city, we chase what we hold dear. Shadows and whispers blend in the night. Cities' pulse beats with all its might. Lost in the chaos, but it feels right. We rise above, reach new heights. In this urban jungle, we're alive. Heartbeats echo as we strive. Dreams collide where the streets survive. Together we'll thrive, side by side.
Welcome to today's It's in the Ballot Show for Hamilton Eastwood Part One. These are your candidates here who are vying to get your first preference votes on why they should be the next councillor for the Hamilton Eastwood that will be re-election. There's always one thing, step in every candidate's way, and that's your vote. That's one on one. Okay, welcome to today's It's in the Ballot Show. And let's kick off using our random list order generator on who's going to be our first candidate to speak. And Rudy, you get to go first with your one-minute open statement. Why, you should begin that number one vote.
Right. There's a lot of stuff that I haven't really spoken about because I've had a two-checkered career. Too many things that I've done, started. One of the things that I haven't spoken about is the fact that I actually was a founding pastor of a church back in South Africa. Also founder of a Cambridge Study Centre, in which we had quite a lot of students. And some of those students, I'd be glad to say, they're actually living in New Zealand at this point in time and actually have made their mark on particular areas. So it's always been a passion with me to start things, make sure they work, and make sure that they thrive. So that expertise I will bring into this council and make sure it works and that it's fine and it's sustainable. So let's have a great council vote. Rudy DePoy is the guy.
Okay, next up, we've got Maxine.
Oh, Chodha. Chodha, and hello, I'm Maxine Van Oosten and I'm a current Hamilton City Councillor. I'm also the Chair of our Finance and Monitoring Committee. And so that means that I've got strong governance, financial oversight, and a real heart for the community. I'm an advocate for them and have been for a very long time with two terms on council. I'm a mum and I'm a grandmother of family that live right here in Hamilton. And so that gives me some real motivation to be continuing to build a great community here in our city. Before I was elected to council, I was working with educational professionals through NZEI. And it was helping them to have a voice to government on the issues that really matter. Issues from valuing teachers all the way to pay equity. I bring all of that experience right here into my role and ask for your vote for a third term on council. Vote one, Maxine Van Oosten.
Okay, next up, Jack.
Yeah, I'm a pastor, councillor, community worker. Also work for suicide prevention, Families for Justice, and Ministry to Mental Health. And people should vote for me because I stand for vision, responsibility, and empowerment. Seeing Hamilton not just as a place to live, but as a beacon of innovation, fairness, and cultural pride. I am a champion for the people, not just the elite, so I'll demonstrate responsibility for the rates and spending, finding fresh solutions to real challenges. I stand for fairness and sovereignty with a background in common law, equity, fairness, accountability, justice to council decisions. I have a proven voice of courage in the community. And I'm open and transparent, and you can phone me 027 678 0867 if you wish to talk about any problem facing the council. Thank you very much. Vote for Jack Gillan.
Okay, next up, John.
Kia ora, I'm John McDonald. I've been campaigning on challenging dysfunction, debt, and dystopia. So what does that all mean? Council debt is at approximately a billion dollars and is a major issue this election. Total debt is expected to grow rapidly inside the New Water Company. Your rates are going up to support that mountain of intergenerational debt. Your future water bills are expected to triple within eight years for the same reasons. Dysfunction within council contributes to the growing debt. Lack of genuine consultation contributes to bad design choices. Contract negotiation is flawed and infrastructure costs are seemingly high. Extravagant options are chosen over practical options. Budget blowouts are frequent. Flashing overhyped projects are prioritised for decades over boring and routine maintenance. A financially vulnerable city is vulnerable to be pressured into accepting things that the people don't want. Congestion charges, asset sales, constant surveillance, and restricted travel privileges.
Okay, next up, Robert.
Yeah, g'day, Robert, John Young is my name after a one as well. I'm sit by Rachel, a mayoral candidate, and John sitting next to me, another mayoral candidate. Jack, a mayoral candidate, and then there's Rudy as a mayoral candidate and the Nicewood candidate, Maxine. So I just wanted to introduce myself by saying that the most important thing of this election is to realise that rates are a challenge for those who are on fixed incomes and also for the corporate community. Rates are going up. The Binin guy in Dinsdale, he spoke to me. He said $10,000 I'm paying, and I spoke to him. Then I realised insolvency faces his future if he has to have a $10,000 to $20,000, then $30,000. And how do we cushion it? So that's what this mayoralty race is about, is who's going to cushion that impact.
Okay, Rachel.
Head for detail, heart for Hamilton. My name is Rachel Corrales. I am a ambassador. This is the community that has shaped me and the community that I now seek to serve. Right now, Hamilton is hurting. Residents, ratepayers, owners of commercial properties, businesses, rates and debt have skyrocketed, especially in a cost-of-living crisis. Ratepayers are not ATMs, and debt used lazily becomes a trap. People of all walks of life and of all stages are seriously considering leaving Hamilton. I've been a CEO of eight years at Koti Pacifica, a lawyer for 14, 10 of those spent representing city councils. And I have more than two decades of experience as a director across a broad range of organisations. That's head. During COVID, as part of Koti's response, I delivered care packages across Hamilton. I've seen the realities that shape people's lives. That's heart. I'm independent, no ties to any political parties. My only priority is Hamilton. I'm not a politician. I'm here to deliver, and I have a track record of executing outcomes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Now, we do have apologies from Tim McIndoe, who will be here later on in the show. He has had to go and do a funeral while attending for that kind of class with it. But he will be here as soon as possible. It's the joys of when you're a marriage celebrant. You do a lot of things, not just marriages, but funerals as well. So we will get on to our candidates for the box questions. There is questions between box number one and box number 28, or between, if we're using today, a model, between Tahiti and Raritka Maualu. Each candidate also gets two button cards. So if they would like to button and give the answer to another candidate's question, they can use one of their two button cards and sit there and give the answer. Also, each candidate gets one preferred card. So if they get a question they don't want to answer, they can always give it to one of their fellow candidates to sit there and answer. We will be heading with our random list order generator. Like, that's how we do things here on It's in the Ballot. And Jack, you get to go first. What's your box number going to be?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, oh yes, the good old driver's licence age. Okay, and we have a letter Q for Q Back. Would you vote yes or no on the installation of water meters for private residents in Hamilton?
I think the question has to be put before the public, and we need to decide as the community whether we are in favour of water meters. And if water meters are brought in, we need to keep the prices down to a minimum. Because ultimately, you might think that water is not for sale because it actually belongs to God and to the people. So we have to focus on accountability because when you get an entity coming and taking control of the water, they could charge exorbitant rates. And that's what we don't want to happen. We want reasonable costs, and we want the water to stay in the hands of the people. Because I remember when they brought out that idea of entities controlling everything, most people were against it. So I'm for accountability with water and staying in the hands of the people.
Okay, next, we've got a button from John. And button from Rudy. So we'll go John first.
Installing water meters, especially smart meters, is likely to cost somewhere between $50 million and $200 million for Hamilton. Wellington Water is estimated at $2,000 per smart meter installation. In Hamilton, that would be over $100 million total cost. Given Hamilton City Council's track record for extravagant spending, contractors viewing council as a soft target and budget blowouts, I wouldn't be surprised if the cost was close to $3,000 per smart meter installation. And we're looking at a total cost there closer to $200 million. The New Water Company will easily add a few hundred million onto a giant stack of intergenerational debt. Then water charges will go up to support those extreme debt levels. This is what we've seen play out with water care in Auckland. I'm keen to resist installing those smart meters at a seen cost. And we might have to push back in central government to stop the rollout.
Okay, now Rudy.
Thank you. Water meters definitely a resounding no. Why? Because it's just another type of tax that's coming your way, and it's an unnecessary event. The reason why it's been done is so that the council, because this goes off-book, and the council is now able to borrow more, and the entity is also allowed to borrow more. So it's a debt trap. And who's going to pay for it? Yes, it's only the ratepayers that's going to pay for it. And that's the reason that, and there are only a few candidates who are actually saying no to water meters. So pay attention to what John has said because his facts and figures are absolutely correct. I say stop the leaks before we stop your money from leaving your pocket. Vote for Rudy, he's going to put a stop to water meters.
Okay, and traditional with every button. Rudy, what's your, what's next box number?
Sorry?
Well, traditional with every buttons, typically the next candidate to come up on the random order list tends to be the one who's just buttoned. So what's your next box number?
Oh, okay. Let's go for that. Let's do a three.
Let's do three, no problem. Okay, we've got A for Alpha. How do you balance the need to, no, how do you approach the need to balance rate changes and the ongoing maintenance of city assets? Or is there an acceptable amount of loss of assets voters should accept in return for low rates?
Well, the whole issue is not really that you've got to look at wasteful spending. That's actually where it is. We're not slashing services. And I think it's a little bit of fear mongering to suggest that that's where it's going to be slashed. We're not going to slash the services. We are going to stop the wasteful spending. The ridiculous outrolling of these speed humps, the ridiculous invasion of orange cones, which all costs money. So if we can curtail all the ridiculous spending, if we can make sure that our procurement is in attack and that we get the best deal for our city, that's where we slash things. We're not going to stop essential services and even good things like parks, et cetera. We're going to keep them, but we're going to stop wasteful spending.
Okay, but another button from John. Gee, you're using those buttons very quick.
Yeah, take the stress out of it. I think the lack of maintenance is more the result of the misallocation of funds rather than a lack of income. Over the last few decades, there's been a number of parts of council which have been consuming too much revenue. I think these include growing the bureaucracy and the numbers of public relations staff, extravagant spending on contractors and consultants, bad design choices, lack of due diligence, councillors and staff accepting dodgy business cases. Councils tend to prioritise flash new projects over boring routine maintenance. Reducing the rates, warts, wrongdoing, and extravagance should eliminate the need for double-digit rates increases. Boring maintenance and infrastructure improvements should have always been council's priority. We need to get council back to doing the boring things and less of the flashy projects and less of the extravagance.
Okay.
Can I have a in as well?
Okay, Maxine's first.
Oh, sorry, sir. Thank you. I think there should be no trade-off between our services and just for being able to get to lower rates. Nobody's asking us for that. Our council has already worked very hard to work on efficiencies to make sure our procurement is effective. There's more to be able to do in that space, surely. And certainly, we can be working much more closely with councils that sit around us to be able to really get some of those efficiencies happening. We all have the same sorts of services behind the scenes as councils, Waipha, Waikato District, even Toorongar. We're all doing the same kind of things in our finance area, in our planning, and in many other services. And by bringing all of those together, they'll be, we'll be able to get some, many more efficiencies. So talk of overspending is absolute rubbish. There's no, none of that happening. And you can be sure that your council's looking after your finances.
Okay, and then next button is Rachel.
Thank you. The question was about balancing rate changes and the ongoing maintenance of city assets. In order to balance rates and maintenance of assets, we need to plan long-term and not be influenced by short-term political cycles and losing popularity by our decision-making. We must plan to take care of what we already have, and this will ensure that legacy is protected and that rates are fair and transparent and avoid the significant spikes like the ones Hamilton City has currently experienced. If we do not invest in our asset maintenance, over time, this erodes trust, which is what has happened and is happening. And it also erodes pride in our city.
Okay, now Maxine, what's the next box number?
Oh, number 10.
Number 10. Okay, we've got V for violin. What is your favourite local artist, visual arts, musician, filmmaker, writer, et cetera, and why?
Well, I don't have a single artist to be able to identify, but I do love Boon. They're an amazing organisation who have put up some great street art and have made many of our buildings in Hamilton much more attractive and great places for our community to be able to see and view. They put this on every year for Hamilton, and we've got around 100 already in the city. And that's fantastic, and it's such great value too. Because if we were to commission even one of those, it would be at least $50,000 for the artist's beautiful work. So a couple of shout-outs. There's a magic one down the lane in Hamilton East on the way to maid. Beautiful work. And then there's another great tiger that sits up next to our, by the, by the museum. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Rachel, what's the next box number?
One.
Number one.
Tahiti.
Okay, we've got Y for Genki. How do you feel about our sister-city relationships?
I think sister-city relationships can be beneficial so long as they are more than symbolic and actually produce some public benefit, such as business relationships or cultural benefits. Outside of that, we really need to consider the value or how we introduce or increase the return back to the public, back to the ratepayer.
Okay, Robert, what's next box number?
The lowest one that's not being picked. Can you hear that, Sam?
Number two. Okay, we've got W for whisky. What should we do with the Captain Hamilton statue?
Well, I listened to four mayoral candidates talk about the statue, and the museum seemed to be a consensus for it to head away. So then that means it's about our ongoing city. Obviously, it's a founding document. One of the things that I enjoy saying when I speak is, you include the Cook Islands. Tare o māori's been spoken for 1,000 years. And in probably 1883, English common law was adopted here through the treaty. So that's 18% of that 1,000 years. And so I just wanted to recognise that because obviously we have Kiri Kiri Rua in Hamilton. But it's very important that we don't exclude anyone in this. And so the wide consultation over and over again is what I suggest. But the museum's a nice place to keep the seagulls from landing on the statue. Thank you.
Okay, John, what's next box number?
Can I have Reema?
No problem. And for those at home who are wondering, that's box number five. Okay, we've got J for Juliet. Last year, Kini Tuhaitia called for, was it? Koutahi Tonga or moving forward together. How would you bring the concept into the role if elected?
I got this one last night. So I'll briefly go over what I said there. So groups such as Kini Tonga and Waikato Taiwai already have considerable mana presence and resources. I don't think they should have special partnership status on council. I'm generally against partnership. And that includes public-private partnerships with corporate entities and overseas investors. My issue with partnership is that it's a kind of creepy term. What do we actually mean by that? Is it candlelight dinners and walks down the beach? We need to have clear definitions of the relationships between council and other entities and individuals. Are they residents, representatives of organisations, voters, contractors, suppliers? What's the nature of the relationship? We need to have that clear and open and transparent about what relationship is. Taiwai can chat council meetings and have an influence there.
And I feel like Heinzen Buket could be coming to your house or might be trying to do some candlelight suppers at some point. Button, is it Rachel?
Yes, please.
Yep. Remember the T silent. Oh, if you know about the Heinzen Buket references, the T silent, it's spelt B-U-C-K-E-T. Keep it up for appearances.
I will bring Koutahi Tonga into office by listening deeply, by building trust across the council, and by building trust across communities and modelling and encouraging safe disagreement.
Okay, and we've got six questions down and another round. Rudy, what's the next box number?
Let's go for seven if it's available.
Yes, we can go for seven. Okay. And we've got A B for the All Blacks. Give us, no, can you give us an example of out-of-the-box thinking so many candidates could seem to say they'll bring to the council table? And how that will help the residents of Hamilton City Council?
To start off with, the, if councillors bring something to the council, that's very different to when staff and officials bring something to council. It seems like there is an emphasis that the ones that bring the stuff to the council table are the staff. And I think so. The difficulty is that we have to deal with the fact that councillors actually have got some brain power. They've got some vision, and they would like to put some stuff on the table. I'd love to see councillors thinking out of the box. And let's not have ourselves crammed into a little crevice because we're not allowed to think. I would love to see councillors really just getting up there and saying, yep, you know what? I think that this is a great idea, or that's a great idea. Let's function on the great ideas and make our city great.
Okay. You're doing a button, Robert?
If I may, Sam. One of the things that's come up in this campaign is the interest rate on the $1.3 billion in debt. So my idea out of the box and really just invited this suggestion is to use the library card, and only 200,000 Hamiltonians are allowed one of those. So our visitors cover the interest. And that's a resolution, as simple as that. Goes to the CEO, it goes to 1,400 staff to come up with creative ways to come up with that $68 million. And then as long as we don't have compounding interest, we can have 1,000 years to pay off the $1.3 billion, and our rates will go down by 25% the next year. Down 25, minus 25. And the visitors love coming here. They don't mind chipping in, and we can find creative ways to find out how that koha is paid as they come. Nine billion people on the planet, there's only 200,000 of us.
Okay, John, what's next box number?
Twenty-six, thanks.
No problem, we'll do 26. Okay, we've got K for Kiri Kiri Rua. With several two-street institutions here, the Waikato is a place where people come to get skilled. But take those skills elsewhere. How can, I don't know, what can be done to stem that brain drain?
So we want to attract good people to work and live in the city and the region. And that's by creating a well-maintained and functional city that respects people's rights. We don't want to be trying to compete against London and New York and Beijing by going in that direction, high density, lots of surveillance, lots of crime. We want to go in our own direction and be an alternative for people to live in. We want to avoid driving people and businesses out of the city, stop burdening them with excessive rate increases and the huge intergenerational debts. We don't want people, young people, to want to leave the city to escape that debt burden. Hamilton has a lot going for it. We are not Auckland, we are not Wellington. We should go our own way, play to our strengths. We've got Green City. We've got green city, we've got lots of trees, we've got parks, we've got the river. And we need to give people, young people, a promising future here.
Okay, we've got another button from Robert.
Yeah, that was second and last button. Every soul is important. If we talk to Jack, we'll hear about the importance of the soul. So everyone who chooses to live in Hamilton is a soul and every soul's important. So I'm a fan of a 10-cent city where you can get with a 10-cent pace, a bus ride across the town, 10 cents worth something in the city. And that's the way we retain every soul that wants to be here. We don't want to lose any souls. And so that 10-cent city, now you might say, well, what happens when the visitors come? Well, they're $10 for the bus. If they want to go CBD out to the zoo, it's $10. But if you want to come in back into town, it's 10 cents if you're a local and you've got your library card. So that's one way of looking at it. I know where you're asking, we're talking about the PhDs and the masters and those ones at the university and the polytechs and stuff. But let's just make sure that everyone is treated as a soul and worthwhile in Hamilton City. And that 10-cent city is an interesting idea. It's the smallest legal tender, so let's use it.
Yep, okay, Jack.
We need to steam the brain drain by creating better opportunities for our youth here in Hamilton. What I see happening around the country is 200 people a day are going to Australia. And with our slash, cut and burn for the gold visa cards, we are doing nothing to protect our youth for the future. So we need to have partnerships with businesses where we can train young people who want to work. We need to have AI training for the youth. I've actually got a game online, the Game of Life for youth. It's about a light passing through everything. But we need to create better business opportunities for our youth. My young son, I'm already talking to him about going into the army. So here in Hamilton, how can we work better with businesses? How can we work better with training organisations to ensure we have work for our youth, to engage our youth?
Okay, and I can say one thing that's definitely different about Hamilton to Wellington. Hamilton doesn't have any motorways, Wellington has three. But Hamilton does have expressways, whereas I think we do technically have one in Wellington, but they still somehow call that a motorway. So that's one different difference between Hamilton and Wellington. Rachel, what's the next box number?
Five, is it available?
Yep, that's still available. Okay, we've got U for uniform. What role do you see the council having in supporting the local creative sector?
Creativity in its many forms is public glue. Council can support through partnering, providing space, supporting funding opportunities and visibility. It can also bear to creativity in the way we plan and the way we tell our stories.
Okay, Roderick, what's the next box number?
What's the highest one, but just down from that, so the one that hasn't been picked. Ruua Te Koma Fiti, thank you, Sam.
Okay, we've got F for Foxtrot. Or Frankton Junction. Let's go Frankton Junction, that's a local name. How do you feel about the government's plans, plan to create an independent arbiter for code of conduct complaints processes with a nationwide level of responsibility and outcome?
Yeah, it's an interesting one. For me, I think the courts are there for a reason. So things need to actually go through the court system. One of the things when you do a contract, you have offer acceptance consideration, which is that 10 cents I told you before, but the willingness for it to be adjudicated by the court. And so when two people are in a council setting, whether they're staff or councillors, they need to be able to operate in the same rules that everyone else has to operate out there. And so it's really a moderation thing with regards to it. But then it's also something that the courts need to, and I said the other day from the studio, if someone gets locked up, well, that's the problem solved. And so people need to know that there are consequences for their actions. But they also need to know that there's a ESOP's fable, don't cry wolf, you know, because people come running and after the suit time they don't.
Okay, yep, we can do a button, Jack.
Okay, code of conduct must allow for freedom of speech and expression, which makes everything transparent. In our society, there's a lot of talk about hate speech and people can't give two opinions on everything. I remember MacPherson was shutting down people when they wanted freedom of speech during COVID. And I felt that was a real breach of human rights. People should be able to express themselves. And I feel this could be a mechanism whereby Big Brother at a top level shuts us down and halves us as thinking with rapt thinking and only one particular point of view on any topic.
Okay, Maxine, what's the next box number?
Chinese, number eight, lucky number.
Okay, we've got the, was it letter L for Lima? Do you support increasing the number of wheelchair accessible bus stops, which means wheelchair users don't have to deal with grass and mud to travel?
Well, there's only one answer to this question, surely. Absolutely, I support that. Accessibility isn't a luxury, it's an absolute right. Now, there may be some expense involved in being able to supply that. But actually, that should be something that we have to consider. Many of the candidates in this campaign have talked about our more than a billion dollars debt. It's completely incorrect. We're well under a billion dollars. And if any of them want to go and check the most recent finance meeting, you'll be able to see those results reported through that meeting. We also have in fact a lot lower of our debt to ratio, debt to revenue ratio. And using this meeting as a way to be able to get the truth out is a really important thing to be able to do. Hold on.
Okay, we only get two. Sorry, in a lot of candidates, it makes it not easy to add more buttons. Jack, what's the next box number?
Uh, box 18.
Oh yes, the good old voting age. Okay, we've got G for golf. What are your views on the legislative inability to remove elected members whose actions bring a council into disrepute?
They need to have legislation to protect humanity and protect people. I think I'm against legislation that leads to absolute control because I'm a human rights activist and I believe that legislation could really stranglehold individuals and people from expressing their own opinions and ideas on things. And one thing I don't want to see is absolute control from the top. So I would rather see transparency and where people are listened to. And we almost have a little judicial court whereby we sort of let people speak and let them express themselves and then we decide. If there's been a total breach, I mean, I haven't seen too many total breaches. Has anybody here seen those? So I think it's just legislation that would lead to absolute control. I don't want to see that.
Okay, we have a button from Maxine.
Oh yeah, thank you for that. I do support an opportunity to be able to do this. Currently, we're really very powerless to be able to take actions. And I support legislation change that can give us some real consequences for the kind of behaviour that brings councils into disrepute. We had a situation this term, in fact actually with a member. And one of our mayoral candidates, Tim McIndoe, he was really quick to condemn the language. But actually, when it came to holding the behaviour to account, he hid behind technicalities, which instead was, instead of taking any real action. And I just think that's weak and we need something else to change. Thank you.
Okay, we have a button from Tim and we're glad you have made it.
Thank you, Sam. And firstly, I apologise for my lateness. I've been at a funeral. Maxine, what you've just said is not correct. You are right in saying that I strongly condemn the language. I didn't hide behind the technicality. What I said was that the penalty should be paid by the offender, not by the rate payer. The process that we were engaged in last year cost Hamilton ratepayers more than $40,000 with no impact whatsoever on the person who had made the offensive call or used the offensive language. I think what it has shown is that our standing orders therefore are totally inadequate and need to be overhauled. Having been an MP, I would like to see something similar to the Privileges Committee introduced whereby we could send an offending member to a body that would be able to impose an appropriate sanction for misbehaviour. The one extra point I do want to make is that I think only the voters should be able to remove somebody who has been elected. The behaviour would have to be really egregious for us to take that action on our own.
Yep, you've got a button, so that's no problem. Rudy?
The whole issue was very widely expressed in the Waikato Times. And they have their own opinions, which normally is not supported by reality. The whole issue about this particular councillor that said XYZ, and I don't want to repeat what he said. But he was expressing his dissatisfaction with another municipality. And certainly, he has a right to do that. I mean, if the monkeys reign, then surely the tent master is allowed to come and say, bring order or change your mind or fix it up. But to then come and want to reprimand him in another council where he happens to be a councillor is absolutely ludicrous. It's nonsense. And in fact, you can't fire a councillor because he is an elected person.
Okay, Tim, what's the next box number?
I have no idea because I haven't been here. Could you tell me what the lowest number available is?
Number six, followed by number nine, followed by number...
Well, we'll go with number six.
Okay, we've got P for Papa. Former mayor Margaret Evans once suggested regional amalgamation and renaming for Hamilton to the city of Waikato, C O W, to reflect the role of the rural community on the city's success. What are your thoughts on regional amalgamation?
Well, we've been known as Cowtown for a long time, so I'm not all that keen on seeing us officially take on that particular acronym. But I was part of a group probably 15 years ago now that was looking into this subject. It was being led by Professor Frank Scrimgeour from the University of Waikato's Management School. So a considerable body of work was done at that time and I believe it could well be time to bring it out again. I think the issue we would have is why would other councils nearby want to take on our horrendous debt? And so that's something that we would have to look at very carefully. There is clearly a case to be made for greater shared services. I am open to the possibility of full amalgamation, but I don't see that it is something that if I were given the privilege of being mayor, that I would lead. I think that would have to be done independently of elected members. We could be accused of having self-interest and all sorts of other motives. But yes, it is time probably to look at it again because it is crazy that New Zealand, with a population of under 6 million, has 75 territorial authorities. That just makes no sense at all.
Okay, got a new round of list order. Roderick, what's next box number?
I'll go from the smallest, the one, the least one that hasn't been chosen, Sam.
So number nine.
Correct.
Okay, we've got I for Iwa. Uh, no, yeah, that does work, yeah. Does work, yeah. God, that came a slip off. How do you feel about the continuation of, was it, Maori representation in committees alongside the Kiri Kiri Rua Maori board councillors?
Can I bounce this one to Jack?
Yep, let's, we can use it to further Jack.
I believe in representational democracy, not absolute control. So therefore, having a representation of Maori within the council is all right, provided it's the trickle down because I see the Fukayang Arua and this sort of thing. They had a lot of houses, but they need to have them available for their own people. Being a William of Orange believer also, who brought a new constitution and he also brought genuine currency when the Rothschilds had the one bar pound. And in a corrupt way, they supported both the French and also the British. And that corruption's been going on behind the scenes ever since. So I do believe in participatory democracy. I was also part of the Mana Arikimarae where we had visions of the Madonna. And all the Maori Iwis have to unite for what's going to happen in the future. So I do believe in it, but there needs to be accountability also. Thank you.
Okay, John, what's next box number?
Ruua Te Koma Tahit.
Oh yes, the old voting age, drinking age, age of, I don't know, what else used to be at age 21? Isn't it where you do the alcohol?
Yeah.
Got to admit, I've never done that myself. I'm not like a fan of alcohol. Probably would sit down there and probably end up doing, I'll probably not get the benefits from it. Okay, we've got R for Romeo. A number of candidates mentioned an excessive speed humps and cycle lanes in their profiles as the reason for running. A large number of these have been requested by the community. How do you weigh up the balance between commuters who travel by car and commuters who choose buses, bikes or walking? And what they need in terms of infrastructure changes, would you support?
Glad I got one of these questions. I'll push back a bit on the requested by the communities part of the preamble. From my experience, the vast majority of Hamiltonians are opposed to the speed humps and raised platforms when they're put on the major roads. Different story in quieter suburbs. There might be a case for them there, but not on the major roads. Even many cyclists, especially the serious and practical ones, dislike the cycle lane designs. So I'm all for conflict reducing designs and I think that should be our design ethos. And we need to avoid putting different road users and footpath users in direct conflict with each other. Crossings need to be sensible and safe and I'm all for underpasses and overpasses, directing cyclists down quiet side streets, through paths, off-road cycle tracks. We don't want to put them in conflict with each other and in danger. We want a conflict reducing design ethos throughout.
Okay, Rudy, what's the next box number?
Okay, let's see, is nine available?
No, that's been taken. Would you like it's husband of eleven?
You're talking to a councillor, you know it's difficult for us to count past three. So let's go for eleven, it's all good.
At least you're honest about it. Okay, we've got N for November. The CBD is dying, is a catchphrase locals have been claiming for years, not unique to Hamilton. In your view, what could the council do to either lift the fortunes of the CBD businesses or change that public view?
I'm saddened by our city. To think that this is the heart of where Hamilton should showcase itself. It's not just at the gardens or at the lake or whatever. Our city is supposed to be the gem and it's not. It's, it looks like a dump. It looks like something out of one of those eerie movies, a place where you don't want to walk with your wife in the evening. The paving is shoddy and dirty. The shop fronts are disgusting. And you look at it, about a year ago, I made a habit of going and confronting businesses when their shop fronts were useless and tell them to clean it. And I think we need to clean our city for a start.
Okay, we have a button from Tim.
Thank you, Sam. I agree with Rudy that the CBD is currently looking really rundown and actually is very unwelcoming and uninviting for many people. So we do need to tidy that up. There is a bylaw that has gone, will be going out in February for consultation from the public and I encourage... and I encourage everybody to look at it. I don't think the wording of it is quite right at the moment, but I'm hoping as a result of public consultation, the aspects of it that need to be improved can be, and it will lead to something that will help. But the other thing I want to mention is that I'm championing the return of two hours free parking in the CBD. We used to have that. There is plenty of evidence, particularly from retailers, but also many customers and service providers in the CBD, that things have changed markedly for the worse since we lost the two hours free parking in town. It won't solve all of the ills, but it does give people the ability to go and do a little bit of shopping, perhaps have a cup of coffee, browse through the shops a little bit, without fearing that they're going to be stung with a very hefty fine. And the fines are now very, very large. So it is important that we get the balance right. That is something we can do to help revitalise our CBD.
Cheeky question here. I know what the fine is if you park in a disabled car park permit, but what is the fine if I go 15 minutes over my time on the meter?
It would probably be $70, but it could in some circumstances be greater.
Okay, it used to be 14. Yeah. Okay, Rachel, what's next box number?
Is Ono available?
No, unfortunately, it's only double digits now.
Oh, you choose one.
Takoma Ruua. Okay, we've got D for Delta. How robust are consultation processes council views to hear from residents about decisions placed in the council?
It's my view that this is one of the reasons why trust is so low. That consultation can feel like a checkbox, not genuine consultation. What we need is real dialogue with our communities, with mandate and reciprocity and actual follow-through. Now, this is a debate, so I want to take the opportunity to clarify something. I have here an attachment from the Finance and Monitoring Committee Agenda from the 26th of August 2025. It is the Treasury Report which sets out the borrowing position of the council as at 30 June. The amount is $1,178,415, closer to 1.2 billion than the under $1 billion or the $990 million, which some candidates are saying is the debt position. Net debt is very different to actual debt because the bank doesn't charge you interest on your net debt. The bank charges you interest on your total debt, and with a sum of $200 million, that makes a big difference. Thank you.
Okay, Tim, what's next box number?
The next one up, please, you tell me.
So was it Takoma Toru?
Sure it was. I.
Okay, we've got C for Charlie. What can the council do to be more transparent with the public over the undertaking and decisions council makes?
Actually, I think to some extent the council already is. I wouldn't suggest that it's always sort of secret squirrel stuff, but we can improve. And one of the things that I would like to lead if I'm given the privilege of being mayor is to appoint a councillor to have the role of community engagement, to ensure that we don't just expect people to come to us, and they're very welcome to come to us and speak in public forums before our meetings and to request meetings with us. But many community groups, particularly those with disabilities who don't have access to their own transport, tell us that they don't feel that that is an option for them. So I would like to see all councillors in the next term actively involved in going out into our communities, our retirement villages, being involved, holding clinics, regular sessions at public libraries and so forth, particularly to engage with people with disabilities, but everybody who feels a little bit marginalised. Because the public have a right to know who we are and should be able to identify us and to see us. I also want to see more councillors attending community events.
Okay, Jack, what's next box number?
Seven.
I'm sorry, only double digits, but we could put times it by two and make it 14.
Yep.
Okay. We've got M for Mike. How do you think we can increase youth participation in local elections?
I'm a great believer in compulsory voting. I do it in Australia. I kind of feel only a minimum voter, you might get 30%. So to increase the youth participation, we have to lower the age. They need to be involved in their own destinies of climate change, cost of living and everything else. So in order to engage the youth, we need to also have a youth council where orangutai and youth that are involved in arts and expression and this sort of thing, where we actually engage them. And civics needs to also be taught in our schools, and we need to do that now. And as a mayor, I believe we need to go to a, the mayor needs to go to a different school every week to keep in touch with the children because they are the future. And therefore, we need to be there for our young ones and promote youth participation.
Cheeky supplementary, how many weeks would it take before the mayor ends up at the same school next time? And could that be achieved in the 40 weeks that kids are at school?
That's right.
Not in a year, it couldn't. It'd take a couple of years at least to get around just the primary schools. And then you've got the colleges and the kuta as well.
We need to do it now.
Okay, Maxine, what's the next box number?
Oh, golly, haven't been paying attention, 15.
Oh, that's a good one. That's the lowest one available, and it's also the old age of the driver's licence, which many of us probably remember getting at age 15. Okay, we've got AA for the double A batteries. What is the most underrated part of Waikato that more people should be aware of?
Oh, golly, I'm getting the patsy questions this time. Oh, my goodness. Well, for me, it would have to be our river paths. They are just magnificent. We do have a bit of trouble in the wintertime with some flooding, et cetera, but actually, they are a magnificent part of our city. They are also double as cycleways, really safe cycleways, which frankly I use in order to be able to get from my home in Hamilton East into the city for council business and other entertainment opportunities. I think that actually, you know, getting more people out exercising, it's really great for our health, great for our families, and you know, it's really good for your head as well and your mental health. Thanks.
Okay, we've hit the one-hour broadcasting mark. Shall we take a break or shall we get straight into hard-hitting questions?
Have a break.
Have a break. Okay, so we'll take a 10-minute break here, and then we'll be back for hard-hitting questions. And I'll just go ahead and put the... Oh, come on here, we're not that rich, Herodot's in the ballot.
It's a word with no confidence.
...
Okay, and welcome back to It's in the Ballot. Now let's get ready for hard-hitting questions. Okay, so hard-hitting questions are the questions we're all keen that's got to answer. There's no balance, there's no defier cards because every candidate wants to answer the hard-hitting question. Let's get on to the hard-hitting question number one. What is your view on the new emergency management bill before Parliament? Rudy, you need to go first.
Right, so the new emergency management bill is a step in the right direction. It's a step forward in making sure communities like Hamilton are better prepared and protected. It replaces the old Civil Defence Act and puts more focus on local leadership and clear responsibilities. It was an important bill, and for that reason, I did a proposal to government. And hopefully, they've taken all of the things that I've got in there because it's important. The only thing, we have to make sure that it is now practical, that it can be done, that we've got the staffing right, and that it's not going to cost us an enormous amount of money to roll out. Even so, there is no price on life. And if we're hit by an emergency of any description, we must be ready for it and act upon it and be capable to deal with it.
Okay, next up, Rodrick.
Yeah, thanks very much. Bella, I just wanted to say thank you. Regional council, you're running and you're behind on the camera there, so that's an important thing. I just wanted to, and you're justice of the peace, so you're doing a great job there. Emergency management is one of those things that we don't think about it until we need it. And having... and having staff in place to actually be a part of that. I joined Ham Radio, which is an amateur radio, because I was interested in being able to talk to people around the world, independent of copper lines or satellites and that sort of thing. So that's the basic level, and that's one thing I'm interested in. Our parks can talk to each other with regards to the young youth, with regards to CB radio and stuff like that. So there's certain levels of developing it. The question's about the legislation, and so with 10 seconds left, I'd like you to have a look at it online and listen to the other candidates. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, Maxine.
Thank you. Yes, stronger emergency management is really vital for us here, and especially as we are entering into some real risks of climate change and the effects of that. And we've seen both in Auckland and in other parts of the country, some of the fallout from that. So having stronger management is vital. I also support having clearer roles, but also that the resources are adequate. And I'm thinking about the money. It's really not just about pushing down these rules to councils, but for government to be funding them appropriately. It can't be just left to ratepayers to pick up the additional costs that may be incurred. And so also, I think that having a local voice is really important. And I'll be pushing to ensure that that comes through really clearly in any submissions that council are making.
Okay, Jack.
Yes, this new bill is to replace Civil Defence Emergency Act. It has four hours involved in it: risk management, readiness, response, and recovery to any climate disaster. Also, greater roles and responsibilities. We see the role of local authorities, Maori involvement, and community engagement. I think to involve the whole of the community, where we've got to protect one another and protect our environment. So I like the new management act. I think it's quite brilliant. And we should be all involved in climate change, and especially teaching this to the youth who need to be concerned about rubbish and be concerned about, you know, the global warming that's going on and this sort of thing. Thank you.
Okay, next up, John.
I think we need to keep a close eye on legislation being rushed through Parliament and what's coming down the pipes in that respect. Labour rushed through a lot. Coalition Government has reversed a lot, which I kind of approve of, but now they're pushing their own things through, which we need to keep an eye on and what's happening there. So this new emergency bill, I don't think it's at a bill with specific details yet. It's largely some vague statements, which are generally quite agreeable. We'll have to wait for the technical details and find out whether there's any concerning clauses in the bill. I generally have concerns about emergency powers potentially being abused if there's a lack of accountability. Public consultation. People talked about going back into disaster zones to rescue pets and feed livestock, and that was framed as being illegal. Don't think that should be illegal, but they should get warnings and be told that they may not get rescue if they go back into a disaster zone. Empowering Maoris was probably a good thing, but I think that should be practical rather than a tokenistic thing. The Maoris have stepped up and done a good job, and some of the disasters have been safe haven, so, yep.
Okay, next up, Tim.
Thank you. I was caught on the hop by this question last night, so I'll try to do better this time. I've agreed with a lot of what the previous speakers have said. Some of us can remember going back to the late 80s cyclone Bowler. Since then, of course, we've had the two dreadful earthquakes in Christchurch and Canterbury, the 2016 one in Kaikura. More recently, we've had Cyclone Gabriel, the Auckland Anniversary Day events and so forth. So what it tells us is that New Zealand is prone to regular natural disasters. And I would imagine that there's probably broad cross-party consensus in Parliament, I hope there is, for this new bill. And I would also expect that there probably would be across councils as well. I agree with the comment that Maxine made, that we will need to look to central government to come to the party for some of the major reconstruction work, because councils just cannot afford to do that on their own. But clearly, the residents of those devastated areas need that support. So I am broadly speaking in support of what I've seen of the bill. Yes, we need to see all of the details, but I hope that it goes through, and it is a good update to our current arrangements.
Okay, Rachel.
Okay, so I'm going to wrap some context around my views on this. So I was a member of the Regional Leadership Group through COVID. That was a group that was chaired by the Regional Public Services Commissioner. Participants were civil defence, our territorial authorities, our city councils, NZ Fire, police, Moe, MSD, DHB, Pacifica, and ethnic representation, but also our Iwi groups. And this group met daily through COVID, and it scaled up and it scaled down. But the main point of it was working together to support our communities across the region through the pandemic. And the frontline, the community providers, the Iwi groups, did all the heavy lifting, took all of the risk. And all of our low-paying, you know, supermarket workers, et cetera, also bore the brunt. And this is my view. So clarity of roles when emergency happens and accountability are good goals, but emergency planning must still be local and must honour local knowledge and protect vulnerable groups and respond to lived realities. It cannot be a bureaucratic model led from Wellington.
Okay, so let's get on to a hard-hitting question number two. Currently, new housing subdivisions are not required to make housing accessible to the front door for disabled users such as wheelchairs. What is your policy stance on making new subdivisions have accessible requirements, such as a wheelchair user can get to the front door? John.
All right, so public buildings, council buildings should all be wheelchair accessible as a matter of course. I grew up in a family with a wheelchair user, so spend a lot of my youth growing up in fully accessible homes. There's a lot of advantage to building accessible, not just wheelchair users, trolleys, buggies getting into buildings, moving furniture through wider doorways. It can actually be lower cost to build an accessible home. So there's a lot of things going for that. We've got an aging population, and we've also got governments around the world and their corporate partners who do tend to start wars, engage in medical misadventure, pollution, and debilitate a lot of people. So there's a lot of reasons why developers should invest in the future and install accessible houses. But I'm for leading by example, instead of using government powers for coercion. This is a property rights issue. A man's home is his castle, and if that man wants to have a moat or a drawbridge or a few steps on the way to his front door, that's his right as a private property owner.
Okay, Tim.
Thank you. I agree with John that all public buildings must be accessible for people with all sorts of disabilities. It's also highly desirable, and most businesses now, I think I understand, that they should be trying to do what they can to make their premises accessible as well. There would be some problems occasionally, which I think would make it impossible to have a blanket requirement. For instance, for reasons of topography, it might not be possible in some areas. But as a matter of course, every developer, I think, should be encouraged to take this into account. And certainly, the providers of social housing should be required. And I'd go further than saying that they should just make it possible to get to the front door. They should also be looking to do everything they can to ensure that much of the social housing they are providing is accessible for people, particularly those in wheelchairs. So that, for instance, shower handles and other doors, cupboard doors, et cetera, are lowered down to an accessible height. It's not difficult to do, and in fact, it probably doesn't come at much greater cost, if any, but it certainly makes a huge difference to the quality of life for those people.
Okay, next up, Jack.
Accessibility for the disabled is of vital importance. That's why they should have accessible ramps or whatever with every home. Also, safer driving is of ultimate importance to crossing pedestrian crossings, because I know there's been a few murders of disabled people, like, you know, where they've crossed the road and they've been hit. So I think we need a safer driving campaign. Have you seen the number of cars that have crashed around Hamilton? I think the council needs to take more responsibility there to ensure safety, not only with the disabled, but also on our roads around Hamilton. If people don't show consideration or understanding, they tailgate and everything else. So I think this issue needs to be really focused on in conjunction with the police, with fines, the people who speed. But accessibility, that's right, for our disabled is of ultimate importance, and we should be really focused on it.
Sounds like one of those new mobile speaking events could be put down Samuel Rowan, for example. Yeah, Maxine.
I don't think you're going to get much dissent from any of the panelists on this question. There's no doubt that we want our disabled community to be living their best and most active lives. And so having buildings that are accessible, homes that are accessible, businesses and community facilities, it's actually a no-brainer, actually. And, you know, we can all benefit from that. It's not simply the disabled. Whatever can suit them will suit our elderly with mobility scooters, with walking implements. It'll suit mums with prams and pushchairs and, you know, even older candidates who need to be able to get around the community. So, yep, I'm all for that. Thanks.
Okay, Rachel.
I will push for design standards that reflect real life and enable dignity. Accessibility has to be inclusive.
Okay, Rudy.
I think we always need to exercise a little bit of restraint before we just take a magic wand and wave it across people and their lives and their livelihoods by just saying, oh, there's a blanket rule now that says you've got to build it this way. You've got to... And we're all talking about, you know, freedom of expression, freedom of your own will, and, and, and. I believe that accessibility, obviously, it matters. But fairness also does matter. And we need to be fair to our people, and I think it's more case-based than it's just blanket. So let's be careful before we just mandate stuff and say, thou shalt do because we say it so. I don't think that that's a clever way of looking at how you govern. I think we must remember that we're dealing with people with hopes, desires, and sometimes they don't have enough money.
So a bit of a yes or no before we get on to a hard-hitting question. Tony lives in the new subdivision near the Wayward Pitchen roundabout. Flat one should say, flat housing subdivisions be an example. That should look, be a push to more do, was it, accessible front doors, say, versus, say, terrace housing. Now, I don't know what a hilly suburb is in Hamilton, but if we mentioned my Wellington equivalent, Newtown, would that be, on a case-by-case basis, for the flat suburbs, would that be more supportive to have accessibility pushed in those suburbs with developers? Yes, no, maybe? What's the consensus from the candidates?
Yes, for me.
I'd be inclined to do it on a voluntary basis. We sit down with the developers and have a talk to them, and even if it's informal quota system, when we say we want you to do 20% without legislating it and forcing them, just have a talk down to them and explain the need and say, can you do this?
Look, I agree that we should be asking our developers to have some vision about that, too. Surely, by having an accessible home, it's much more marketable as well. By having some higher standards that they might need to meet, maybe we can do something different in our processes that makes it easier for them to be able to get those consents. So, you know, there's a bit of quid pro quo. Might cost them more, but surely council can do a little bit to be able to get to that vision as well.
Tony came mentioning from GJ Gardeners for his one. To go to the front door, there's no additional cost difference, whether it's level and accessible or got a step obstructing wheelchairs. There's no cost difference to GJ Gardeners and their costing for that section based on a flat property. That would obviously be different if it's terrace housing, but for a flat section, flat section, there is very little price difference, if so minuscule, that they don't even have a different pricing structure.
No barriers then, right? So that sounds great.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Okay, let's get on to a hard-hitting question number three.
Can I answer that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the concrete examples in the 2000s, government mandated, central government, that prostitution law reform had to be zoned by councils. And Hamilton was one of the first councils that went through that process. It was very comical watching them, where the signs go, and surely put them up in the second story, out of sign, out of mind. And I remember the disabilities came along, and someone in a wheelchair wanted to access that service. And it was very comical watching the councillors discuss should access of a wheelchair to those venues. And it was part of the discussion and consultation. So there's that. The other one is in these new subdivisions. What if we have a bell at the gates, and if you don't want to have wheelchair access up to the door, but then you've got the problem of the kids walking past and pressing the bell on the way home from school? So there's costs and benefits for this.
It's an interesting way of putting it. I'm not sure if the bell difference between the front door and Tony, one on the road is about, was it? The driveway, it's about the same length as the driveway that fits one car. So last night, I had to park on the road because the trailer's, with the trailer on the back, it's too long.
That's your 20-minute city.
Yeah. Okay, let's get on to a hard-hitting question number three. What is your position on retaining Hamilton City Council's Kiri Kiri Dua Maori ward and the Waikato Regional Council's Nataki Uta Maori constituency? And why do you hold that position? Rudy.
It actually really saddens me that a topic like this is actually up for discussion. I escaped a society that was steeped in racism. And you had all sorts of reasons why you could entertain racism, because the United Nations actually is opposed to racism. But they always have the provisor, unless it's justified or whatever. We had it in our own constitution back in South Africa, unless it's justified. It is actually never justified. My whole being fights against anything that smells and/or looks like racism. So I cannot force myself, I can't even get to think about finding anything or allowing any legislation that has a separate type of effect on people, dividing lives, dividing communities. We are one in New Zealand.
Okay, next up, John.
So constitutional changes should be decided by referendum, especially when it comes to voting rights. I'm going to vote for removing Maori wards. I take a traditional view that equality before the law is foundational to legitimate government in this country. However, many different governments have repeatedly breached those rights and betrayed those foundational principles. My observation is that we're in the middle of attempts to completely replace traditional concepts of equality with postmodernist concepts of equity in New Zealand. Equality before the law is incompatible with achieving equity by having the government treat some different identity groups differently and separately in an effort to balance out some real or perceived injustice. Using postmodernist thinking to transform wider society is crazy and will have crazy consequences. It's anti-reality thinking. We need to guard against postmodernist ideas taking over science, engineering, the legal system, government, and the administration of council operations.
Okay, next up, Rachel.
I support the Maori wards. Democracy is about fair representation, and we all know that Maori have been underrepresented in or many of our institutions for a very long time. There may be better ways of ensuring representation for Maori and others, but this is the one that's up for discussion right now. Any changes in the future must be guided by respectful consultation.
Okay, Wadra.
Yeah, I'm glad this question's come up. I have a different view from the panel. I see that the language is the thing that's at the table, and by having a seat that's mandated, we get Tere Maori and English. If we're going to get rid of Tere Maori, then let's get rid of English as well. Now, which of the other 3,000 distinct languages on the planet do you now want to converse in? And that then becomes an issue. So back 180 years, there was a choice. Do we want French civil law? Do we want Russian civil law? Because the Whalers were all sailing around the shore. Do we want Japanese? They chose English common law, and there's a reason for that, and that's what's baked into the cake. What we do have a challenge with is ACT, for example. So you're a New Zealand citizen today, and then you join ACT. Then there's a challenge on the seven Maori seats in the general war. Then there's a challenge on the seven Maori seats in the general ward. So this is the tension. And you have a million people on that side and a million people on that side. There's this big tug of war and we're feeling it today in Hamilton.
Okay, Tim?
This question is actually irrelevant because what I think and what all of the candidates think won't make any difference. This is going to a referendum. The voters will decide and it is for us to respect their decision. But I will make the point that I have for a very long time argued for the abolition of all wards because I believe strongly in the old maxim of no taxation without representation. By that, I mean, I think that every resident and rate payer who's eligible to vote in Hamilton should be able to choose everybody who is going to sit on the council because every councillor makes important decisions for our city and makes decisions about how our rates are spent. So not to be able to vote for even half of them, which none of us can under the current system, is undemocratic. And ironically, Maori are most discriminated against in that respect because they can only vote for three of the current 15. I would, however, strongly endorse the Mungai Maori model, which I think is working very well. We've got some excellent people there. And I would also like to see one, perhaps two, Iwi community boards to ensure that there is a strong and well-respected Maori voice in all of our decision makers.
Okay, Jack?
William of Orange had indigenous treaties with all the peoples of the world. And I see this as a human rights issue because with a two class system, David Seymour wanted to have just the upper class and the lower class with a slash, cut and burn for the gold of Visa card. And this is what it's come down to in our society. Unless we have participatory democracy of all people, I'm a multicultural liaison officer, where are we headed to? We're headed to a two class system that's just going to crap on the poor. And I see this as an issue as participatory democracy should represent all the indigenous people of the world. This is not only going on in New Zealand. This two class system of slash, cut and burn is going on throughout the world with Trump and different nations. It's time that we brought human rights to the fore and had indigenous treaties for all people. Thank you.
Okay, Maxine?
Thank you. I 100% support keeping a Maori ward. And I have in fact voted to do that for Kiri Kiri Rua Hamilton. What is not up for a referendum is the regional council Maori ward. It's not in question at this time. And that's because it was put into place well before the legislation change that happened to put the referendum in Hamilton. So just to be clear, that is not a referendum on that one for the regional council. So in terms of why, it's because, actually, I really respect the voices of Tonga Tafanawa and having those at the table strengthens our decision making. It also is a treaty obligation that we have. And I'm more than 100% to support that. And removing them really is a step backwards.
Okay, so now let's get ready for closing statements of why each candidate should get your number one preference vote. We've got new orders here. Robert, you get to go first.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for watching this video out there and making your decisions. I watched Angelo Leary in a YouTube video six years ago, which was very informative. And you can see why she has been a councillor for the last 18 years. So this format is growing. It's a format that in the United States, they believe is going to be consequential in elections to come. So good on the candidates that are here today and showing up. Bala, from the regional council, if I had your pamphlet, I'd hold your face up, but we see it on the gates. I just wanted to say, it's really appreciated your services today behind the camera, as well as Sam and the rest of the crew behind the scenes. So I'm just welcoming you to participate. And it's about getting that 70% to get that envelope. We'll come along on the 11th of October before noon and have that vote, bring your ID.
Okay, next up, Maxine?
Thank you. I'm standing for my third term in council. And there's some debate about how long councillors should be standing. But certainly I've got an awful lot to offer. I've had that experience and that makes it that I can start working for you from day one. I've built relationships both with the regional council and our district councils that surround us. That helps to have those difficult conversations that sometimes about amalgamation or about change makes it easier. Hamilton is growing fast and we need to be in a place that we can take advantage of that and use our influence to change it. Do you want to, the question I'm asking is, do you want leaders who will squabble about the numbers? Or do you want leaders who can continue with the positive change that we're making here in Hamilton? I fall into that later category, absolutely. And I'm asking you to lift your eyes, to look out and see what's possible and to support candidates who have that vision. Kia ora.
Okay, next up, Rudy?
We are here today really to look at something. And I thought I should bring a very simple idea to everybody. If I have a water tank full of water, but I do know that the water level goes down all the time and I haven't used water. So the theory then is, obviously the thing must be leaking somewhere. It may have a leak or more leaks. So we get an expert in to come and have a look, why is the water level coming down? He has a look at it and he comes back and he says, you have leaks. So before we top it up again, we fix the leaks. And this is why we and I am going to council. I'm going to fix the leaks. I'm going to find the leaks, fix the leaks before we start topping it up from the top again so that we can all use our finances that comes into the city in a proper way, in a dedicated way. Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Thank you to those who've been watching. Sam and Nick, thank you to you and the It's in the Ballot team for this opportunity. And I also want to acknowledge my good friend Bala Tikasetti, who's out working hard. So good luck in your regional council campaign. Because I missed the start, having been at a funeral, I'm not sure what people said. But I have heard John, Rachel and Rudy speaking very eloquently at a number of meetings now about how serious our fiscal position is in. So I'm going to trust that they gave those details earlier. I don't believe it's about squabbling over numbers. I believe it's about being honest about how serious our position is in. As a city, we are in deep debt. We have not been careful with our spending. We need leadership and a team of councillors who will be laser focused on ensuring that we do the core services well, eliminate the wasteful spending. I have significant experience both at central and now local government level. I believe that I can be proud of that. And I just want to make the point, please do rank me in the East Ward by-election. Don't assume that if you've ranked me in the merril, that that's enough. If I don't win the merrility, I do want to be back as an East Ward councillor. Thank you.
Okay, John?
So my top priorities are making infrastructure more affordable, cutting out the extravagance and budget blowouts. We need to stop the city falling deeper into an intergenerational debt trap. We need to limit rates increases and bring that new monster, which is going to be the water company, a debt monster, under control. We need to make the bureaucracy simple and less expensive. And we need to get the right skills around the council table to do that. So rank multiple candidates. I've got candidates I'm working with on the east side and west side. There are other candidates today, which I'd trust to also bring some of that financial situation under control. We also need to reverse the smart city agenda. Council should manage infrastructure, not manage your behaviour. We need to reverse the transformational changes designed to punish automobiles, raised crossings and lane bus stops, limited parking. And we need to, yeah, make the bureaucracy less complicated and less expensive and bring everything under control for an election. I encourage people to get out and vote, rank multiple candidates. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Rachel? I don't think so. Did you turn the microphone? Okay.
When you vote, you are choosing the people who will make decisions for you, your home, your families, your future. You should know who you are voting for. Please do not do yourself or your community a disservice by voting for a familiar face. Do your research, ask yourself, what has this candidate delivered? Choose carefully. Three, the number of sons I have. Fourteen, the number of years I spent as a lawyer. Hundreds, the number of council files I've read advising on risk and liability. Millions, number of dollars raised for community projects. 190,000, roughly the number of Hamiltonians in need of change. Radical change is needed right now. Change isn't a catchphrase, it's a shift, it's an injection of something new. I am that change. Vote for Karalas.
Okay, and Jack?
Uniting Hamilton together with Jack Geelen. I'm a believer in the Lord Jesus Christ and the King of all kings. Secondly, I believe we need new vision in the council. So I believe in two terms and you're out. Grounded like steel, flowing with the wind, whiplisting posts, creative energies with partnerships, uniting Hamilton together. People should vote for me because I stand for vision, responsibility and empowerment. Seeing Hamilton not just as a place to live, but as a beacon of innovation, fairness and cultural pride. I am a champion for the people, not just the elite. So I will demonstrate responsibility for the rates and spending, finding fresh solutions to real challenges. I stand for fairness, sovereignty, with a background in common law equity, fairness, accountability and justice to council decisions. I am a proven voice of courage. Vote for Jack Geelen for mayor and for Hamilton East Council. Thank you very much.
Okay, and when it comes to voting in the selection, we'll be using the voting system as a symbol of transferable vote. Now, there are six positions that are available for election for the Hamilton East Ward. So in order for a candidate to get there, they must achieve the quota. So the quota is the total number of positions available plus number one divided by the total number of votes. In this particular case, it will be 14.29% of the vote plus one will be the quota to get elected. Now, redistributions can come both from the top and from the bottom. If your redistribution comes from the top, that usually means your candidate has exceeded the total number of votes they need to get elected. A good example would be is, say, the quota is 650 votes. A candidate receives 1,000 votes and so they have 350 excess votes. So what happens when there is a quota redistribution from the top? The candidate who received 1,000 but only needs 650 keeps 1,000 or 0.65 of those votes. And then those 0.35 votes go to the candidate's second preferences. And that process, if they come from the top, that process keeps going until six candidates are done. If a redistribution comes from the bottom, which means that no candidate has received a quota and they've eliminated the bottom, the full votes from those candidates or impartial votes from those candidates at the bottom redistribute up to the top until you get your six candidates. So please make sure when it comes to voting, don't just look at your first preference votes, but look at your second, your third, your fourths, your fives, your sixes and all that as you go down. And look at which candidates you'd like to have at the table. And this election will not just be decided just simply by the first preference votes, but also by your second, your third and your fourth preferences. And the great news is, if you vote for a merril candidate and they're eliminated in the merrility and coming as a council, or if they stand for council and for election, if that candidate is eliminated because the candidate's won a higher position via vote, those votes get transferred to the second and third preference candidates and go through the same process as well. So the great news is that, you know, you can both rank for the merrility and for the councillor roles and the votes will redistribute their way forward based on what happens with the candidates. Can I thank our candidates for participating today? It's not easy to jump in front of a video camera, but you guys have done a brilliant job. Good luck with your elections. Also, I'd like to thank our team in studio for making things work. Bala, thank you so much for joining the cameras. I know it's a first task for you doing it. And also like to thank many members of the team. Laura for being our remote editor for today, for making this work. And for, was it Stacey who has done the graphics? Nick for being the candidate liaison. For Helen for helping sort out all the questions and all that sort of stuff. Carol for doing the plane cards. And Laura for also doing the marketing for the social media. We'll be back at 14pm for part two of Hamilton East Ward. And we will see you then. Have a good afternoon.